A special meeting of the Bloomfield Hill School Board of Education on Friday, April 19, 2024. It's 5:30 PM. Trustee Noble, can you please take attendance?
Everyone's in attendance except for trustee Kumar.
Who will be arriving momentarily. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that concludes 1C. Moving on to Section 2, Public Comment. Public comment is an opportunity. We do have public comment tonight, correct? Public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. It is not a time for dialogue. It is in the interest of time. The open meeting Zack provides the boards may place limits on the time allotment for an individual comment. In addition to making a public comment, you may also email the board at any time. Any comment that contains profanity, threats, defamatory remarks, or is directed at any person not employed by the district or member of the Board of Education in their official capacity and related to the role and responsibilities for which they are employed or serve, or is otherwise exempt from First Amendment protection, will be excluded from public comment. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, please identify who you represent. Thank you for taking the time to address the BHS Board of Education. Reminder that we do limit public comment to three minutes. And trustee Eflah will take time on that. So we have one public comment. If you don't mind approaching and introducing yourself.
Hello, good evening. My name is Chandler Yatuma. I have four kids, three at Way Elementary and one still in preschool. We moved to this district for the schools and we've been at Way since my oldest started kindergarten in 2019. I wanted to come tonight to share a little about the incredible experiences we've had with the school district. I know most people usually come to board meetings to speak up for three minutes when they have an issue to address, which is understandable. But I wanted to show up to a meeting to share for three minutes how happy we are in the Bloomfield Hill Schools community. I voted for board members to take on the responsibility of leading the school district while I get to enjoy the benefits of their leadership. And I feel grateful to have you all doing the hard work for us so we can all be happy with our kids' school experience. I feel lucky to be in this district with my kids, where I can trust the board, the administration, the teachers, and the school staff to take care of my kids and make decisions that ensure they stay safe, feel cared for, get the best education possible, and succeed in their futures. I come from a family of public school educators and I feel strongly about the importance of our public schools for the entire community. I've been incredibly impressed with every experience I've had so far with Bloomfield Hill Schools and Way Elementary School. My kids have had amazing teachers like Mrs. Firstill, Mrs. Reed, Mrs. Woods, and more, who have gone above and beyond in everything they do. And they've had the most caring principals at Way, like Ms. Fibki Lang now. They've also been involved in countless after-school activities and extracurricular opportunities, like sports teams, STEM classes, chess club, robotics team, art classes, ski and snowboard club, cheer and dance, variety show, and summer camps. We've gotten to know some great parents and people who are leading these activities, like Genevieve, who runs the flag football program that my boys have grown so much from; Debbie and the high school football coaches and dance team coaches, who graciously allowed my kids to go on the field with them for games in the fall; the robotics parents who've been wonderful about including the elementary schoolers in the program and gave my kids a tour of the Pitt area when we just showed up to see a high school robotics competition at the high school. We are also members of the Farm and Nature Center and I tell my kids all the time how lucky they are to have those programs as a part of their school district. I truly feel like we're living in a make-believe school community where everyone we know is just so kind, inclusive, and passionate about doing what's best for the schools, the students, and the community. The few issues that we've had over the years have been handled with genuine care by teachers and administrators very professionally. I hope that all the superintendent candidates looking at the position will know how truly incredible the community of people in this district is. My family has been so happy with our experience in Bloomfield Hill Schools. We count this school district as one of our greatest blessings as a family and I'm happy to share my gratitude with the people who make our district awesome, including our schoolteachers, paras, staff, administrators, and the school board. I tell our teachers and principal often how thankful I am for their work and I wanted to take the time to come tell you all too. So I really appreciate all the work that you do. My husband and I truly talk all the time about what an amazing school, community, and district we have. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So appreciated.
Thank you very much. All right, that was the only public comment that we had. All right, moving on to Section 3, Board Business. Trustee Kumar is now here, so we will move on to 3A, the selection of superintendent candidate finalists.
Right, so I'll speak loudly. All right, well, it's decision time. So we started with 40 candidates. We did a paper screening. Screened down to five. We had one that went through in the process. Ended up with four qualified candidates. We survived a night of power outages in our interview process and so I want to compliment the board on keeping, staying focused throughout the process and getting through. The candidates were all very complimentary of the process and thank the board for everything that you put into it too. So now it's decision time. So we're gonna go from four candidates to two. So I don't know what order. President Hill, you'd like to go in. I'm gonna let you select. And then remember, we're gonna, as you vote, certainly would be helpful, would be helpful to have a comment that goes along with it because, you know, frequently people are still making up their mind between candidates. So if you have something you want to say in regards to the candidate, one different way, it would be appropriate at that time. Please focus on professional attributes and experiences in your comments. Positive, of course, if you were live streaming are always best in this process. So any questions, Provost Terry?
Are you, so the order that we're gonna go in, I have Rebecca ahead. Great idea. I have a bag full of seven numbers. I'm gonna ask you to pull, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask you to walk around and have each board member pull a number. That'll be the order. But before we do that, can I ask a clarifying question? When it's our turn, are we gonna state our two? Or are we gonna just, okay.
We're gonna state your two.
Okay.
We'll do the tally, you know, if, you know, it all works out initially, then we'll be in order for a motion right away. If we have a tie somewhere, then we'll have some discussion about the tie. If you can't, if we are unable to relinquish the tie, which typically doesn't happen, then you might, we might have to get our calendars out and look at a different day, which I'm sure happens at times, but you're probably not looking for that. We should be able to get down to two, I'm hopeful.
Thank you.
Okay. Don't look.
I like these numbers.
Nope, I grabbed two.
Oh geez. Well, that will be great. No, we don't want an accident.
Did I unplug anything?
No, I think you're good.
Okay. All right. Who's the lucky number one? Carolyn?
I am the lucky number one.
All right.
So I will go first.
Okay.
I will go with an alphabetical order. I choose Ms. Kohansky and Mr. West, and I will tell you why. I thought Ms. Kohansky's education was superior to the other candidates. She's getting her Doctorate in Education for 2026. She has 29 years of experience. She started in Clarkson and then went to Troy for 15 years. She was a principal for a year. She was in Rochester for seven years as a principal and then Wild Lake for five years. So she has some good longevity in her roles. She's worked on a bond in 2019, 316 million bond. She may lack some of the actual, like, details of working on that bond, but I believe that she could get a mentor and help her with some of that work, as a lot of new superintendents do get. She has worked on a budget and a strategic plan and has done cuts two times in her career, so she has had to make difficult decisions. She's looked at data and closed the gaps for student learners and that's one of her focuses if she ever gets this position. So I also agree with that stance. For Mr. West, he has 16 years of experience. I believe he was, would bring stability and collaboration in our district. I liked what he said and some of his answers. And he is nine and a half years in Troy as Deputy Superintendent. He was interim Superintendent of Atherton for a time, which gave him some experience. He wants to focus on the strategic plan and I think that's something we really need here, some long-term planning and collaboration. I also liked how he said he wants to celebrate our story or someone else will degrade our story. So I like that position. And he worked on a $555 million bond in 2022. He has a proven track record of financial acumen and that's something that's very valued. And he's data-driven, which I think we all would agree is something very important. And I liked his recommendation letters. The Troy Superintendent of Schools said he overseed 190 million budget in Troy. The Troy School District Trustee also said he assumes the superintendent role when Dr. Makaski is not in. So he had good recommendation letters, similar to Ms. Kohansky. And I don't think there's any perfect candidate out of all these four people that, they all had strengths and weaknesses. But I think with a mentorship, people can rise to the occasion. So those are my choices.
Okay, thank you. Number two.
I'm number two.
Hi, Siva.
So first off, I'd like to say we had four good candidates. As trustee Noble said, they all had different strengths and weaknesses. It became obvious to me, or got reinforced, that we are very fortunate as a school community. You know, we've got a dedicated staff, administration. We've got a healthy foundational allowance, which is not a liberty many other districts have. We've got an engaged community, which is rooting for the district to succeed. So I came from the perspective that we have many building blocks in place, going back to what I mentioned on Wednesday. We have the facilities now in place from our bond. As, you know, President Hill mentioned, we're looking for a unifying candidate, somebody who can bring people together and collaborate. And from that perspective, the two candidates I felt best fit that bill were Rick West from Troy and Billy Schellenberger. I thought Rick West had a lot of interaction with the community. I heard personally from a board member in Troy that he was the face of the district to the community in getting the bond sold and had, has been a strong number two to their superintendent. From what I can gather, he's a collaborator and facilitator and I found those were his strong points. As for Mr. Schellenberger, he's shown, he comes from the corporate world and has had to, you know, wear many hats in a small school district. So I view him as being nimble and being able to adapt to the circumstances. And I view him really as a facilitator and a people person. So for that, those two, for those reasons, I nominate Rick West and Billy Schellenberger. Thank you.
Number three.
Number three. So I've got an explanation for my choice. You know, I think today really is a pivotal moment for deciding what the future of our school district will look like. While on paper, we're selecting the next superintendent for the schools. This is a decision that's a lot more than that. We're selecting the person who's going to empower our educators to continue to do the incredible things they do, but also allow them to do even more and give them the resources and opportunities they need to reach their own instructional goals. So while we're selecting a person who will help ensure every student, including my own children, can reach their full potential, find their passion, and ultimately become successful at whatever they choose to do throughout the rest of their lives. When I first started this process, you know, I know there were words we all think about and use, like visionaries or innovators. And this is back to last year. Those are the kinds of things I had in my mind for a superintendent. But, you know, at this point and where I've got to, I don't think those are always the most important attributes when I think of a superintendent for a school district. We, at least I, I looked at finding a leader who possesses the following: an ability to create stability within all of our functional areas, ensure we have the right people in the right places, manage the financial resources of our district excellently by ensuring the program, services, and other resources those dollars are spent on are providing a maximum return on our investment. With this board, develop a comprehensive strategic plan, which will align the direction of our district, provide clear goals and expectations, and illustrate a path for accountability to the work we set out to do each and every day. And lastly, a leader who will make tough decisions, but make them, collaborate, and beyond just sharing information, use the skill of listening to understand so that all voices are heard, represented, and included in the development of our district. So, you know, I know, I want our community to know, this is work we all take very seriously. I know as much as I've been on the phone and meeting with people, every other board member has as well. So I appreciate all four of the candidates we interviewed. It was truly interesting that every single candidate was unique in their own way. I don't think you could look at a candidate and, and look at their attributes and say, yeah, they're just so similar. Everybody was so unique, which is a great thing, but a difficult thing because we need to find the leader that doesn't just fit what we need right this moment, but we need someone who will get us to where we want to be in five years. We need to select a candidate who possesses the talents and attributes which are necessary to get the district to where we want to be, not to just carry a status quo. So that being said, I believe of all the candidates we interviewed, Mr. Rick West possesses those attributes. He was the only candidate that I felt made a solid reference to the leadership challenges that we faced in this district and that we're currently working to provide a resolution to. He spoke in detail about strategic plan. He's worked on the current one for Troy, which is in its second iteration. That's something that we know we're going to have on our plate here very soon. He made an important note about empowering people to do the work they need to do. And for any organization to be successful, you've got to empower and enable your most important resources to succeed. And in our school district, the most important resource we have is the people. We need a leader who's going to create a strategy, define goals, and let those teams execute and provide mentorship when it's needed. He understood our district in really great detail. He came prepared with an understanding of our past, our present, and how he envisions the future. If you look at his 90-day plan, it's clear he has done his homework. He knows who we are. He knows what I feel like we want our DNA to be in five years. He made an excellent point regarding the question of how to handle tough financial times, which was to go back to the strategic plan. If you look at all the candidates, to me, that was a great answer of, whenever you're thinking about what you need to do, you need someone who can go back to a process, who goes back to a system, who goes back to a policy. We can't make decisions that are off the cuff and that's the kind of a leader that you want to have in place, someone who can make those decisions because that allows you to measure progress. You can identify gaps. You can identify where you might need resources. So through my many discussions with our community, our educational professionals, one thing was clear. We need to hire the most qualified candidate to lead Bloomfield Hill Schools into the future. It's not about pinpointing things in someone's career. It's about really finding the right person who's going to get us to where we need to be. And for me, I'm making the decision to vote for Mr. Rick West to move forward to the next round.
You got another vote still?
Nope, I made one vote.
Just one vote? Okay, okay. All right, so we're on number four.
All right, I had written a lot about each candidate, but I'll keep it to just my selections.
Okay.
Though I think we have four excellent candidates. If we could take a little bit from each candidate, that would be ideal, but we live in the real world. So I'll talk a little bit about what I like about the two candidates that I'm going to put forward and my reservations about those candidates. And my two candidates are going to be Mr. West and Mr. Schellenberger. I like Mr. West because he chooses his words carefully. It doesn't make for the smoothest interview, but his style provided the most authentic and thoughtful responses, in my opinion. I was impressed with his experience with strategic planning and his commitment to the process in Bloomfield. I like, I like that he saw the recent lack of stability and leadership as an opportunity for better alignment of district priorities. I think that his, you know, knowledge of finances is a huge asset and his authenticity made me believe in his want to cultivate relationships that would lead to coherence and alignment of a true strategic plan and that he wants to be a present leader in our district. But I am a little bit concerned with his experience, with the proof that he has the ability to execute his personal aspirations at, you know, being a present leader. And when it comes to Mr. Schellenberger, I like that he leads with his heart and he's a person-to-person interaction person. And he made me believe that he would lead through relationship building, actually taking the time to understand the needs of each building, each administrator, and each teacher, parochistodian, and bus driver. When discussing the need to close a building in his district, he made me believe that he could handle sensitive issues with grace. I was impressed with his commitment to buy in versus blame up or blame down. He lives in Bloomfield and he has experience in similar districts prior to his time in Clausen. But I am, on his side, I'm concerned that he'll be able to be that relationship person while simultaneously being the superintendent that we need. And I'm also concerned as to whether he understands the commitment that this community expects. I wrote similar things about Mr. Kendall and Ms. Kohansky. I think that they were excellent and I had reservations about them as well. But when I read through all the material, looked at data from districts, talked to, or communicated with Pat Watson and Rob Glass, talked to community members at the North Hills Track Meet yesterday, talked to community members at the Donuts with, or what's it called? Donuts with Grown Ups this morning. You know, watched, re-watched the interviews, did all these things. I came to the decision based on the fact that I think that these are the two that are best positioned to lay my concerns to rest in a, in a, either a second interview or going forward into the future. So. And I had a lot more to say, but I'll spare you a few minutes of your time.
So just to clarify, West and Schellenberger, right?
Correct.
All right, number five.
It's me.
Okay.
So I would like to echo the sentiments about the four candidates being a great pool. And I, when we were done Tuesday night, I thought, we have, we're gonna have a tough decision on our hands. And then when we were done Wednesday night, I thought, we're gonna have a tough decision on our hands. So this was a good problem that we were fortunate to have. As one of the trustees had stated, I had a list of pros and cons for each. And there, I don't think that the perfect candidate exists. I think that it depends on who you're asking and what their interests are. Are they long-term? Are they short-term interests? Are you looking for business skills? Are you looking for more educationally-based skills? Are you more interested in soft skills or the ability to be, you know, stern and firm? So there's a myriad of things. So I will say to the two that I'm not going to select that this was a very, very hard decision for me. Because I found, someone was asked, someone in the community was asking me and said, how do you think it's gonna land? I said, no matter how it lands, I'd be happy with any of the four. So that made this very difficult for me. With that in mind, I'm gonna prefer to keep my reasons as to why very brief, just because we are gonna go on to another round of interviews and I'd like to hear from them objectively without hearing, you know, too much detail about my thoughts, because I don't want to sway anything moving forward based on that. But for me, the two candidates that I choose, based on experience and preparedness and an overt amount of letters of recommendation that were sent on these individuals' behalf from people that I respect and take a lot, their word has a lot of weight, in my opinion. My two candidates that I'm asking to move forward are Ms. Kohansky and Mr. West.
Before you tally this, are those numbers right?
Yeah, Schellenberger.
I think you're wrong.
I think you may have done it twice.
Yeah, because there should only be seven tally marks total. We've got eight.
So, Tim, I think you put John's, you put John down twice for Schellenberger?
Because only, only, only two people have said Schellenberger.
Well, you only voted once.
I voted for one person.
Okay.
I have 225 right now.
The only two people who voted for Schellenberger so far are Siva and John.
Okay, all right, I apologize.
That's okay.
I was getting eager listening to the.
That's okay.
And Kohansky is what?
Okay, so let's go back to where Megan is, right?
Kohansky and West. So Kohansky should hit two.
Yep.
Kohansky and West. Okay. All right, that check out?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry. I just, I wanted.
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that, that, that's all I have to say on it.
Typically, I, typically I remind you to make sure you're tallying too in case that happens. Sorry, I get sidetracked. So thank you, Tariq.
Thank you so much. So I think I'm number six, so I'll go next. So this is also a really, really difficult experience. I am also extremely excited that we were able to yield such excellent talent in our applicant pool, both here and as well as the other folks who were a part of the process. So I wanted to start out by saying, in my selection process, I did go through and look at not just what they responded, but their packet and as well as some internet, you know, things that I did. But I'm going to also, I respect what our president has said and I think that's a very, very interesting statement because we do have another round and I want to make sure that my words, to your point, President Hill, don't sway the person in deciding on how they want to reflect and model moving forward. So although I do want to say at least I do appreciate the fact that our candidates did do some research and understand our district, which is very important. So the two folks that I would like to move forward are Ms. Kohansky and Mr. West.
Last but not least, right?
Similar, I mean, again, appreciate, you know, the process, you know, the 40 people who applied, the four people who came out for interviews. And again, I'm gonna keep my comments brief. I've spoken to a significant amount of people, gotten the feedback in the portal, you know, read all the material, you know, went through their bios. So the two people I'm gonna select are Mr. West and Mr. Schellenberger.
Okay, we've got 13 votes on the board, so that's correct. So, so we've got one candidate right now that obviously is in the finals. And we've got two to have a discussion about. So if, typically what we do in this step of the process is people share more about why, the three people that voted for Schellenberger, why they chose that, just briefly. If there's something that you think you'd like to say about that. And then we allow the Kohansky people to go again and then we ask if someone wants to consider a different vote. If that doesn't happen, then as a board, your choice is, are we coming back three nights? Siva?
We could alternatively have Tariq. Exercises, right?
He could.
I'm happy to do that.
Well, that's perfectly fine with me.
So if I were to vote for two, which originally I was, I was on defense about doing it. I just felt strongly about what I, I felt strongly enough between the two that I was on that I picked one over the other and I. I picked one over the other, and I would be open to hearing more from the other candidate that I was looking at, especially now seeing how many other people might be interested in that candidate. If I were to have picked the second candidate, I would have chosen Mr. Schellenberger. So I would cast my second vote for him.
Okay. Well, I think we're in order for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the two candidates with the most votes, Mr. West and Mr. Schellenberger.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I would rephrase that as majority votes.
Majority votes for Mr. Schellenberger and Mr. West.
Any discussion? Any further discussion?
We do a roll call, right?
Right.
Yes.
Trustee Van Hemmerd?
Yes.
Trustee Southward?
Yes.
Trustee Cohen?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Noble?
Yes.
Trustee Coomer?
Yes.
Myself is a yes.
Well, congratulations. So we're to the next round. Thank you for all the consideration that you did. I know it was a tough decision. You had four quality people. I appreciate the effort that's going into a critical role in moving your district forward. So what I need your help in now is determining the next round of questions. So at this round, you have a sample at your place of the bank. You can pick from the bank two questions, or you can write two questions. Please remember, if you're writing questions, you can look at number eight in your do's and don'ts of interview.
Tim, if you don't mind, I'm going to call an audible. I'm going to make a suggestion based on the written questions. I need a minute, based on the candidates that we have. I can't do this right now. I need like the weekend to think through what I would like my questions to be.
And Paul's bringing student questions on Monday.
Well, in fairness, we gave them, right, that, we did give our students till Monday as well, so I sent a note out. I'll get their questions Monday.
They get an extension, we get an extension.
Yeah, you can get an extension.
That's what I was saying.
That's perfectly fine. Monday gives me plenty of time to get the scripts together, and I can get them to Rebecca, right?
And then we also need to decide as a board...
Hang on, hang on. So that's concluded on the questions, right?
Yes.
Yes, Michelle.
So if we are each selecting two questions from this pool of questions, should we perhaps come with more than two suggestions, in case two of us have the same?
Well, that's a good, that's a good point. So to clarify, we have a list of suggested second-round questions in front of us.
Right.
We're asking each trustee to come to the second-round interview with two questions. You can write those two questions yourself, or you can select from the pool.
Right.
So what I might suggest, because what you're suggesting is some of us might duplicate, right? So why don't we submit them to, go ahead, Siva, do you have a suggestion?
Could we do what you did for the first round of questions, where you assigned each section to one board member, or you can do...
Well, some of us might not want to ask any of the canned questions.
I'm going to write two questions.
Yeah.
So...
But the other thing that I thought of with the written questions is there might be some overlap there, too. So is the board open to submitting the questions to the subcommittee, which consists of trustee Southward, trustee Coomer, and myself? And we can review for redundancy?
Yeah.
And if there's anything redundant, we'll come back to you and let you know that there's another question that seems to address that issue. We have another meeting next Thursday, so we can vote on those questions, even though we're not going to make them public.
If I have the questions, you can have the scripts, and then you can give the thumbs up or thumbs down on the scripts, and the questions can be adjusted at that time, too.
I'll send you guys my question.
Okay. And then the other thing that we've talked about is that the questions do need to be the same for each candidate.
We'll crack.
We discussed, I had had a conversation with Tim about the fact that I might have different questions for different candidates. And if that's the case, I will just, if I have one for one, one for the other, I'll ask them each that question, if that makes sense, because it's important for a public interview that they be asked the same question.
Absolutely.
Can I, okay, no, that's after, and I'm just thinking timing. So is it after the interviews? And I'll look at the schedule, where we do, we decide in terms of the site visits?
Yes, we're not there yet, Paul.
Yeah, and we could talk about that now if you wanted to, too. But the other piece that we need, or you need to think about, too, is what presentation topic you'd like to have.
Yeah.
Should that go to the subcommittee as well?
Yeah, just, yeah, because we might all, we'll take a look at, well, I need to think through that for a minute. I don't...
Yeah, it can go to the subcommittee to make recommendations.
Okay.
It's you, Michelle, and Siva.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, if we have ideas, we can pass them on to the group.
Yeah, we'll pass it to the subcommittee.
Yeah, okay.
So that would take care of the written questions, or the scripts, and then the presentation topic.
Yeah, so if everyone could submit their questions to Siva, and Michelle, and myself on Monday, the end of the day, Monday, and I'll make a spreadsheet, a confidential spreadsheet, that we'll try and see if there's anything redundant, and then on Thursday we'll finalize, based on the list that we have, we can vote to...
You'll send them to me, and then I'll do the scripts.
Yeah, of course.
And I'll get you the student ones as well.
Okay, perfect. So now, so we are still on, so we've concluded Section 3A. We're still on Section 3B, the finalist discussion interview next steps. You've each been provided a copy of a proposed itinerary for the second-round interviews, full day in the district, and then evening interviews. Does anybody have any comments based on that, or any adjustments that they're asking to make on that schedule?
I'm going to step out right now. Is that okay? Step out to call the candidates?
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
Okay, all right.
That would be important.
The schedule for the site visits, it's limited to three board members, or is it open? I can't remember.
No, no, that's another, that's another topic that we need to discuss.
Okay.
Attendance by board members at the sessions in the district. My suggestion, Rebecca has created a spreadsheet for those who want to, there's no expectation of coming at any point, but if you can dip in and out at any point. The reason we created the spreadsheet was to try and see where there might be gaps, based on people's schedules. I mean, a great starting point, if you have flexibility, would be maybe try and attend the school or the location where you're a liaison, but that might not be practical with work schedules. So Rebecca created that for the purpose of, you know, just clarity on when people are available, so that if you have more flexibility than someone else, you might attend another session that maybe there won't be any board members at. But in terms of the community engagement piece, I don't, there is no reason that we have to be limited to three. The board would not be acting in any capacity to be deliberating or, you know, contemplating anything.
Wait, 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 stop talking, stop talking.
Mickey, can we pause? Can we pause for a moment?
Mickey, Mickey, pause, cut the mic. Can you turn his mic off in some way? If we keep talking, if we keep talking, he cannot hear us. Maybe they'll focus on my microphone and not that one.
I love it.
No, hang on, wait, Paul.
Is the schedule in here?
Yeah, that's what we're looking for, the schedule.
Yes.
I just want to see the schedule.
It's in the calendar appointment.
This is exciting news for these two candidates. And which one is it?
Superintendent Surge Community Recommendation Detail itinerary.
Job of my lifetime. I can't see, so Paul, you're going to...
Don't worry.
I'm not a runner. And then like, Siva, you're the closest to the door, you're just so calm.
Are we currently live streaming? Rebecca, are we right now?
I can't see.
Is it finalist itinerary sign up?
I don't know.
You can have all week to think about if you can fit into any of those time slots. But the public itinerary will be part of the communication that goes out today after this manager's. So we just need Megan to identify, the board to identify which candidate's going to go on which night.
Okay.
I just can't see, so it's probably here. My camera here.
We're going to identify which candidate goes on which night?
Thank you, thank you, Megan.
Which candidate goes on which night?
Yeah, which one goes where?
Should we put these numbers back in the sack?
I was going to say, is there a reason?
Why don't we just go in alphabetical order?
Yeah, that sounds fair and just.
Schellenberger than West.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if there's some insinuating circumstance that is brought up, they can address that with Tim, and we'll figure it out, but right now, let's just go in alphabetical order.
Yeah, okay. So Mr. Schellenberger will go on Wednesday, and Mr. West will go on Thursday.
Correct, Rebecca, thank you.
I will do my best to be here on time, but I will be late, according to my schedule.
Okay.
But I will be ready.
Okay.
The Wednesday one, not the Thursday one.
If you start at seven.
Yeah, I know.
Wow, she's booked up.
The Wednesday one, I will be like a little late, but Thursday, I will be here on time. I got to see the schedule in advance.
Just so you know, some commentary about the itinerary that the subcommittee did discuss would be, you know, it is a very tight schedule, it's a very long day, but we discussed the building locations, and we thought it was important that to travel to one building was to travel to all, so that there is a stop at every, every location in the district on the itinerary. But we did build in travel time, and we are sensitive to the fact that we'd like to give the candidates a breather between the full day and then the evening interview, and we will absolutely protect and make sure that they get that full hour in between the two to be able to decompress, have some dinner alone, and prepare for their interview that evening. All right, is there any further discussion about the itineraries? We've determined which nights the candidates are going on. Everyone's going to submit questions to the subcommittee on Monday. Is there anything I'm missing, Rebecca?
Not on that note.
Okay.
Yeah, the presentation goes first, oh, correct.
He did say the presentation was first.
Okay, I will watch that as I drive.
Are we able to pause the livestream until Tim comes back?
Can you call for air?
Yeah, call for a recess, please. Order coming out of our recess. The only two items we have left to address are, well, the final item we have left to address is the schedule for the ninth. What would be our start time is currently slated for 6 o'clock. Is that accurate?
For which day?
The ninth, the finalist decision.
So I think we want...
Paul, just one moment. Is it 6 o'clock on the ninth?
It's currently set for 6.
Okay, and that does not work for every trustee, correct?
Hold on, May 9?
Yep.
Does it work for you on the ninth?
Yes, it works for me on the ninth.
Thank you.
Not I.
It doesn't work for you?
Does not work for me.
What time do you need it to start?
I need it at least 6:30. I'll be on a plane back touching down at 5, so I'm going to try to rush to get here, so 6:30 would give me enough time to get there. So I'm asking for at least 6:30.
That's more to 7.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I hate making it longer for everybody else. So 6:30 is my minimum, but it's up to you guys.
I'm fine with that.
May 9?
I've got two sporting events with only two parents to get kids to those places, so...
So we want to do 7 o'clock?
So you need 7, too?
I could do, I think 7 probably would be helpful.
All right. Does anyone have an issue with 7? All right, so it's 7 on the ninth. Paul, there was something else you wanted to address?
Just the whether or not we're going to incorporate site visits.
Okay. Before we do that, I want to make a point of clarification. Previously, when we were talking about site visits, we were talking about site visits on, in Bloomfield Hills. And we agreed that more than three at some point, attending at any point, would be fine, but the trustees all need to be very careful to make sure that you're not congregating with any other trustees and deliberating, discussing, "I like this," or "don't like that." If at any point, there are more than three of us in any given place, please be purposeful to avoid any appearance of that going on, and spread out, and make your observations without interacting in a way that could be misconceived, even if that's not what you're doing. So that's for the, and then the last, that's for the, on Bloomfield Hills sites. Trustee Cohen brought up wanting to visit the candidate sites, so we need to decide if that's something that we want to set up formally, or if each trustee wants to try and set that up informally. You both recalled past experience with this. How did it, how did it go then, and what is your recommendation?
In the past, it was set up formally, where you had x date, the person, it was three trustees that showed up and sort of watched the candidate in their home district, you know, for like...
Then you have an opportunity, if you want to talk to some students or talk to some staff, then the candidate will schedule, and will schedule a time that you're able to talk to them, if you're interested in that.
Yeah, so it was formal, as opposed to seven of us individually. I think it's hard for the candidate to have seven. I think it's, I think it would probably be wise to have it formal.
Trustee Coomer?
In this particular case, both candidates have different profiles currently. One's in a business role currently, and one's more of a traditional superintendent. So just keep that in mind, because their day-to-day would be very different.
Yeah, no, I think, but for me personally, I would like to go to, let's just say, in Troy, whether it's central office, and talk to the people it works with. I mean, both, you probably would start out in central office, whether or not candidate wanted to bring you somewhere else. I think that's probably where the formal meeting would take place, and the candidate can decide for whether it was probably like, it was like an hour and a half, two hours, can decide what the agenda is for the two hours.
Okay. Tim, is that something that maybe you should speak with each of the candidates about?
I can.
What works, what would be a good date for them? And then we can figure out, sign up for that accordingly? We don't have to decide that right now?
Yeah, you don't.
I don't think it's fair to say, "We're going to pick this date." We have no idea what's going on there.
Between now and May...
Well, we had a ton of dates on that, didn't we?
So between now and May 9?
It has to happen between now and May 9, yep. So if you could each speak to each of the candidates and find out some suggested dates?
Thank you, Rebecca.
Okay. Okay. So I think that covers everything. Had some bloopers with microphones tonight, it's been exciting. Is there anything else anyone would like to discuss?